Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And Commissioner Lotner, you're the first one here today. Would you lead us in the pledge?
I would be happy to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Kramer?
Present.
Commissioner O'Rourke?
Present.
Commissioner Rexroth?
Present.
Chairman Wessel?
Here.
Commissioner Ross?
Here.
Commissioner Alguier?
Here.
Commissioner Lotner?
Present.
All present.
Okay. We now have some minutes to approve any motions. We have three sets of minutes that the clerk's office has provided. Commissioner Lotner?
I would recommend approval of organizational session minutes of Wednesday, January 3, 2024, executive session Tuesday, March 12, 2024, and closed session, March 12, 2024.
Support.
All those in support of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes approved. Thank you. We now have a proposed agenda, and we've got a few changes that the clerk's office has noted. The under consent agenda item number six, that needs to come down to an action item.
So moved.
And number seven, please?
And number seven was coming down to action item, the first action item. And then the clerk has added a late addition for the correction of the equalization report, which would be action item 17.
Got it.
Any other additions or deletions? Commissioner Lotner?
Yes. First of all, what number are you going to make what was previously consent agenda item number six?
Will be 18.
18, okay.
And MLI administrator search will be, we'll just keep it seven, but we'll move it down to the action item. It'll be the first action item.
Okay. And as far as, as far as action item number 10, I would like that to automatically go to April's meeting, which will allow us to get some letters of understanding in place and the, a couple of other things, classification figured out.
Any other additions or deletions? All those in support of that agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved, 7-0. Thank you. We're now at the administrator update. Deb?
Well, I don't have a whole lot to bring before you today because the agenda is pretty full as it is. But I do want to just mention, based on some of the wonderful discussions that have been happening here in the, in the government center with the staff and the elected officials in terms of establishing their code of conduct and things, there was a discussion about the possibility of doing some sort of internal proclamation or something with the employees. And it just so happened that in May, May 5 through the 11th is National Public Service Employee Recognition Week. And so it's been proposed that perhaps the board would support a concept of having a special day during that week where there would be recognition of that. So I don't have a specific proposal or EDS for you tonight, but I just want to put that forward as a recommendation that in May, we look at the possibility of having some sort of employee appreciation during that particular week. So more to come on that.
And when in May was that?
It was May 5 through the 11th is National Public Service Employee, or Public Service Employee Recognition Week. So I think they were talking about possibly that, we have a board meeting that week, so it could possibly be that Tuesday, which I believe would be the 6. So, but more to come. Thank you.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Good. Well, we're now down to the public comment. And at the beginning of our meeting, we have a three-minute agenda-specific public comment. We thank all of you for coming. We invite you to speak to us about anything on the agenda. And last week, I was reminded that when we have a crowd like this, sometimes we applaud or we speak out or, or we get a little bit involved. And I would just urge us, let the board do the talking, and you let us know afterwards if we did it right or wrong. But thank you for being here, and I would invite anybody here to raise your hand and make public comment on any item on the agenda. And would you please refer to the agenda item when you do it so that we know what agenda item you're speaking to?
I'd like to call, my name is Stu Quinlan and Leland Township. On this agenda-specific item, wouldn't it be more practical to have the five-minute comment first, and then we hear what the commissioners have to say on the agenda? And we could comment more, you know, it would be more pertinent after we hear what you say? Just this suggestion.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Yes, Ms. Bailey?
Sorry, I'm sweet. So I'm Melissa Bailey, really, this is today. Speaking of your support of early childhood, you all agree that we have a housing crisis, but we also have an age-related crisis. We don't have enough young families. You know that. And we don't have children in our schools. So supporting housing and supporting young children should balance our population. We need to be welcoming on both of those issues because we're also in a competitive market for young families because there just aren't enough of them. So I would encourage you to follow your words of support with actions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, Bill?
Hello, this is Elmer Township. Pretty much what I said last, last meeting about it. You know, taking care of the kids is one thing, but I follow TCAPs, and I know this is legal enough, and I think there's some similarities all over the country. I follow TCAPs for 24 years now, and constantly they're promoting LGBTQ.
Bill, can I ask which agenda item you're speaking to? Well, as I said last week, I think that's stretching it a bit. This is, on the agenda is approval of a millage issue. Can you hold your comments till the end of the meeting?
Well, it's like, if they're teaching something, I don't know what they teach, but I just want to present it again, and it seems like it's relevant. How much money would you pay if you thought they were doing something that was possibly harmful to the kids?
Any thoughts, commissioners? I don't believe that's on the agenda.
No.
Shirley Chauvin.
The only child of the nation.
It's all over the country.
No, that's not what this program is.
We'll listen to your comments at the end of the meeting, Bill.
That's what I'm just trying to make sure that's not happening.
We've told you that before.
Please stay and talk to us at the end. Thank you.
We have a real important issue.
Any other public comment? We do thank you for coming tonight. Thank you very much. Any commissioner comments? Okay, we're down to our consent agenda, and I want to read this. "The purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one motion without discussion. Any commissioner may ask that any agenda on the consent, any item on the consent agenda be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected and will not need a second." Commissioner Rexroth?
I would move that we approve the consent agenda items as modified.
Support.
All those in support of that motion say aye.
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 The consent agenda is approved. We now have the item number seven that we moved to action item, moved down to the first action item, and then we'll be looking for a motion to go into closed session. But first, we'll deal with the MLI Administrator Search Process Action Plan, and when you asked that this be put down as an action item.
Yeah, I have just a fairly quick request, and that is, since we are looking for administrative plus finance, financial skills, I would recommend that, I would move that we move the salary range from 110,000, 110,000 to 150,000 instead of 140,000, hoping that we would better able to attract people with financial background or skills.
Pardon?
I'd be willing to second that.
Okay, moved and seconded. Do you want to speak to that, Gwen?
Just that the market is extremely tight and very, very competitive, and we need to make sure that we are able to attract, since we're combining two positions, we're saving actually a lot of money. We were going to pay 100,000 for each position. So we do have some wiggle room there, and we want to make sure that we get somebody with the right credentials. So I think that will open up our possibilities.
Jamie?
I'd just like to piggyback on that and also say that, you know, beyond the salary range, taking into consideration where we live as a part of this whole package is, we all know, it's hard to find a house for under a half a million dollars at this point. So I think upping the salary range seems like a very practical, really, thing to do in this space.
May I say there's people here that went here last week, they're in discussions, like I say, the big offensive job recently for a financial director of that range, I believe, was 100, 200, 30, I believe 110, 130, sitting Travis City for the system manager, it would pay between 100 and 130,000 for the system manager position, just for that perspective.
Mr. Rush?
So is the person we've hired to help us with this process, do you have a, do you have a thought? I mean, last week we were at 140.
You're setting a range here.
Yeah.
So you have flexibility within that range. Of the searches I've done this year, I've done three of them, I'm doing the fourth for Branch County. The three that I've successfully negotiated, we're able to come up with a common compromise that it's not at the top of this range. So, you know, it depends on the candidate, but we do have flexibility, I think, to more flexibility, the better. You don't want to get in a situation where other units of government cut themselves, where they have, they're not set a range, or they set a range that the commissioners were not completely in agreement with, and that submits messages to the candidates. So my advice is, it's up to you to set the range, but when you set the range, stay within that range. I gave you some examples last time, I won't repeat them if you have a long meeting. But my advice is, if you set the range, make sure that you stay within that range. You're going to have issues if you start promising potential higher pay for different candidates. And it's not a fairness to the candidates, they want to know the ranges also, so the job we posted, I always put the range in every media outlet that the job is posted. So people know I'm wrong.
Any other comments?
Can I just read the motion for clarity? Is that okay?
She, the new one or?
I just want to read the new one to make sure I write.
Okay, certainly.
Because I'm taking it from this. Motion by Alguier to set the salary range for the county administrator slash CFO at 110,000 to 150,000, seconded by Kramer. I'm saying to better attract, was that part of your motion or were you just saying?
No, you can leave it short, yeah.
Is that correct, administrator slash CFO?
Yes.
I have a comment, but I would see if anybody else does first. Mike Concern, oh, yes.
Yes, thank you. I'm not going to support the motion. I was really comfortable with the 110 to 140, just because I even think that, I'd like to see first if, if there's anyone interested who may already even be in the county. If someone wants to come to the county for this position, I really don't think that $10,000 is going to make that big of a difference if they have to come in and purchase a home in our county. So we've already said that they can live a certain distance from the county line, as long as it's a reasonable distance, et cetera. And I think that, I think that we're, we're going to do okay with that. But I, if we're going to set a range that's going to be, you know, expecting them to buy a $600,000 home in the county, we're just not going to be able to do it. I do know there's, in fact, we've got two right now, homes in the county that are right around 300,000. So we're starting to see them come down a bit, which is good. So I, I don't know, I'm just, I was comfortable with 110, 140. Then I think it's a little high. A few years ago, we didn't have a salary over 100 in this county.
Anybody else? Yes, Doug?
I just, you know, we talked this through and we agreed not to, I don't disparage Commissioner Alguier's judgment, but we kind of went through this, we came with a plan, there was general agreement on it, and so it'd be my position to stick with the original plan, the 110 to 140.
Commissioner Work?
I don't believe there's any regulation to, police officers can drive their car X amount of miles right side of the county, but you can't require any employee to be within so many miles of the county.
That's not actually true, this is in court cases. You can set reasonable expectations for services, and the courts have ruled overall 20 miles is a reasonable amount. Now, you don't have to do that if you want to remove that, that's strictly fine.
Is that in place?
It's in the job description.
Yeah, it's in the posting, but you have a right to take that. We should discuss that.
Yes, because.
It is common to have reasonable expectations. You cannot, you are correct, that you cannot mandate that they live in the county.
Right, right.
Commissioner Crim?
Based on numerous court cases from 2001, 20 miles has been determined to be a reasonable expectation within the county limit line. So really, it's not from this building, it's from the limits, it's really 20 miles from the county line. If you all wish 20, you don't have to have that. If you want to remove that and let the person choose where they wish to live, whether it's 50 or 100 miles, that's up to you also.
Commissioner Kramer?
I really would like to see this candidate have buy-in to our county, and I think that means living here and really existing in all the ways that you can exist in Leland County. Quick Google search, a typical salary range, and that's not anyone, I mean, like, there's smaller counties with like 60,000, but 121 to 160 was what was listed. And we are, again, the most expensive county in the entire state of Michigan to live in. So it's important that I think we take all of these factors in when we're hiring someone because it's, it's the place, their sense of place, and their sense of belonging that's going to keep that candidate here, hopefully. So just some things to think about.
Anybody else? I, Gwen and I talked about this, and I initially supported this. I have concerns about it after thinking about it, and one is, if, if there's a range, we usually pay at the top of the range. And, and if, if we have 150, then the candidate's want 150. And I looked at what all of our senior-level administrators make in this county, and, and I, I believe that the discrepancy between a salary of 150 and what most people in this building, or even most people in this county, make would be, would be disadvantageous to us and to the success of that person. I'm not going to support it, but I understand it. Anybody else? All those in support of the motion on the floor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Motion defeated 2-5.
So it will save the 110 and 140 as was approved last week?
Yes, that's correct.
You need to make a motion tonight. It was executive.
So you do need to make a motion.
Okay. I would move to set the salary range for the county, new county administrator search at 110 to 140.
Support.
All those in support of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You have a salary range.
Just a clarifying, I assume you're going to keep the 20-mile radius?
Yes.
In there?
I don't.
It's 20 miles from the county line.
This, this kind of goes back to, we were given all this information to go over, and I don't think now's the time to make these decisions. I just think, I.
I don't see why we limit, I don't, I don't see any reason to have the mileage limit, frankly. Well, a lot of it comes to expectations, such as with our deputies, they're expected to be able to respond within a certain amount of time. And that's where the first limit came from. And, and that was, it's very reasonable. We need our deputies to be here as soon as, you know, they can get their resume. And I think at one time it was, Mike, is ours 10 now or are we 20?
It was 5, we moved it up.
We're out at 10 now for our deputies. We've got, what, 30% of our employees do presently live outside the county. So if our administrator happens to choose a home outside of our county within that reasonable range, it's reasonable.
Okay. So, thank you, Chet.
Are we going to keep that in? Now, I think it's a question that people are going to ask when they're setting the job.
What happens if we have the most qualified person roll that lives 21 miles away?
We can make an exception.
Benzey County, Frankfurt, I mean, you know, we're getting real close here.
Yeah, I don't think.
I mean, I think it's ridiculous.
I do too. You weren't to insist they live in the county, is that your hope? No.
No, unlimited.
Oh, unlimited.
They want to drive 100 miles a day to come here to do a good job, they should be able to do it.
You do have the option of just not putting it in there, and when you find a candidate, determine whether you're going to be part of the negotiation process.
We could leave it as part of the negotiation process. I really don't think we want them in Grand Rapids commuting. Do we need a motion?
Not if we don't want it in there.
I don't want it in there.
I'll just take that up.
Why limit ourselves?
Everybody okay with that?
I think we have to be reasonable, but we can negotiate.
I really believe us.
Okay, thank you, Chet.
Thanks for everything you've done.
All right, so I believe we're, we have a draft job description and we have a salary range. I'll work with Heather Cade to finalize. If you have any comments on the job description, let us know if you could, even for the next several days or week, if you could. It's the same one I sent out 10 days ago, so you had it for a while.
We have a special meeting, and thank you.
Thanks for your work today.
I just say in fairness, I mean, I, if there's not going to be a mileage, I mean, you think, I think this board would have trouble with someone who lives 270 miles away. So I mean, you got to make clear to the candidates.
You could ask during the interview, or else if that can be one of the questions. So you're very right to ask that question.
We don't pay mileage. We don't pay mileage.
Thank you. We will see you on Friday afternoon at 1:00. Now, we're down to the action item agenda, the potential closed session, looking for a motion to go into closed session in the language that's on the agenda.
Which is?
It's just the MCL, hoping to go into closed session, MCL 15. Commissioner Lotner?
Yes, I would recommend that we go into closed session under the MCL 15.2681C to discuss strategy and negotiations related to collective bargaining.
Support.
All those in support of that motion?
Roll call.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Lotner?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Rourke?
Yes.
Commissioner Rexroth?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Chairman Wessel?
Yes.
Commissioner Alguier?
Yes.
Commissioner Kramer?
Yes.
7-0.
Before we go into closed session, we are going into closed session for negotiation purposes and meet with our attorney. I suspect we'll be in that session for at least a half hour. So you're welcome to stay, but we apologize for that. Thank you. Closed session.
That's our Texas sheet cake.
I don't have a problem.
I have any?
Thank you. Looking for a motion to go out of closed session?
So moved.
Support.
All those in support of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, 7-0. We are now back into open session. Commissioner Lotner?
Yes, I would, I would move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners reject the proposed letter of understanding from the command officer's unit regarding salary proposal, and take it up at the next, take it up during the next union schedule.
Negotiations.
Negotiations? Yes, I'm sorry. Actually, I didn't have next in there, so you can, next, take it up during the negotiation schedule, and to authorize the union, to authorize the union negotiation team to meet, if necessary, and bring back recommendations to the full board.
Support.
Discussion? All those in support of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, 7-0. We are now down to action item eight, Leland County Road Commission Road Millage Approval Resolution. That was a 7-0 vote, but we do need to have a roll call vote. Any further discussion?
Well, we have the motion, right? Hold on.
Would the clerk read, call the roll?
We're waiting for the motion. I think we have the question.
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners approve Leland County Resolution Number 2024 TBD, to be determined?
Yeah.
Okay. Resolution for a roads and highways maintenance repair, millage renewal proposal to be placed on the August 24 primary ballot as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? Would the clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Alguier?
Yes.
Commissioner Kramer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lotner?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Rourke?
Yes.
Commissioner Rexroth?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Chairman Wessel?
Yes.
7-0.
Okay, we are now down to the Benzey-Leland District Health Department Early Childhood Millage Resolution, and I asked the clerk to, she's been doing work on this, could you, could you review that for us, Michelle?
Should be page 30, 31 in your packet.
I sent it to, gave all the information to Attorney Perone, I think it was, I was dealing with at Cole Stoker, and he drafted the motion. It is five years. It is a resolution authorizing the millage election for Leland County for the Early Childhood Services Millage Renewal and Restoration Proposal. So, and it isn't up to, so in 2019, it was put on the ballot at .2530, and you have rolled it back, of course. This would restore it back to the .2530 on the ballot, but it still offers you as the Board of Commissioners to levy up to that, it doesn't mean you have to. And actually, if there's a heavily rollback, you won't, you wouldn't be able to do the .2530 probably, even if you wanted, because this will not hit, if it is approved by the voters, it won't hit the tax bill till December of '25. So it'd be '25, '26, '27, '28, '29, because the current one we're operating under goes on this December's tax bill in '24. And that's really, it's pretty straightforward.
Questions for Michelle? Gwen?
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners approve Leland County Resolution Number 2024 TBD, resolution authorizing millage election for Leland County Early Childhood Services Millage Renewal and Restoration Proposal and certifying ballot language as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? Commissioner Lotner?
Yes, so, just find it here, I have a question on, how much that brought in, isn't that like?
What's listed on the proposal that would go on the ballot is, we'll raise an estimated 913,128. That would be based on the maximum of the 2.5.
913,000?
Yep. Yep. That's if you went to the max, which you won't be able to in December of '25, levy the max if it passes.
So, don't we determine the exact amount in...
You do, but you would do that in, if it passes, then you would do that, I believe it's either in April or September of '25, I can't remember which month, it's not my area of expertise.
Right.
September?
September.
September.
Any other discussion?
So, well, my concern, I just had concern about the amount, so it's, that's nearly a million dollars, and I think that it's, um, the numbers, and I don't have a phone number exactly in front of me, I know the numbers are 300 children, um, and I do believe that's a stretch. I, I'm not positive that those are all, even Leland County children that are being counted, and so that's a great concern that I have. Um, I understand, we discussed last week, a lot of this is just salaries, because salary is the program, so I would have just preferred that we did not ask for, for that much, they haven't been using that much, and I know it's an up to, so fortunately, we've been able to see reason in what we levy, but my concern is that if it's there, it's going to be levied.
I, I need to clarify, we're not setting the exact rate right now.
We're setting the ballot language.
What goes on the ballot.
Which is a maximum rate.
Yeah.
And before we approve the allocated amount, next spring, we would look at the budget, we would look at the surplus in the budget, uh, and, and then we would determine, as we did last year, that we did not need to collect, uh, anywhere near the full amount.
But this gives us latitude.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in support of, oh, we gotta call the roll.
Commissioner Aguirre?
Yes.
Commissioner Kramer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lautner?
No.
Commissioner O'Rourke?
Yes.
Commissioner Rexroth?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Chairman Wessel?
Yes.
6-1.
Thank you. We, uh, now are down to the, uh, item number 11, the Emergency Management. Matt Ensor, you're here, he's on his way to Aruba as soon as this meeting's over, so thanks for sticking with us.
Nice, good, good judgment.
Again, this is, um, page number 34 in your packet for tonight's meeting.
Yep. We, this was presented to us, uh, any questions for Matt on, on the, on the service plan? Hey, looking for a motion? Doug?
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners approve the Leland County E-911 Service Plan and approve the Leland County Resolution Number 2024-XXX-E-911 Service Plan adopted and Resolution as presented.
Second.
Support. Any discussion? Michelle, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Rexroth?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Chairman Wessel?
Yes.
Commissioner Aguirre?
Yes.
Commissioner Kramer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lautner?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Rourke?
Yes.
7-0.
Thank you, Matt, for all of that. You now have a late edition that you told us about, uh, but why don't you, why don't you give us a little summary?
Yes, um, unfortunately, I don't have the signed document to, to book for you, but we do have...
Oh, there she is.
Kathy comes through. But after a long painstaking time that I and I and, uh, and Deb have been part of in order to, uh, get the township to be part of this tower project, uh, we have agreed on language. So, what you have before you is the language that the township and the county have agreed upon. It's been embedded by our attorneys, but I don't believe the township sent it to theirs, but, uh, our attorneys have looked that over. Um, one thing that the, uh, the board maybe needs to see is that they're 20 years ahead of this agreement, so, um, we receive their compensation upfront, and if AT&amp;T were to leave the North Port Tower at the fire station and go on the main tower, we would, uh, share revenue with the township for one. That's what we see.
That's good.
Commissioner Kramer?
I move, uh, that the Leland County Board of Commissioners approve the intergovernmental agreement between Leland County and Leland Township for the construction of the communications tower located off Kitchen Road in Leland Township.
Support.
Any discussion?
When's your flight?
Tomorrow evening. Technically, I can check in.
I'm sorry if I, I'm sorry if I missed that, Matt, but the road, did you say the road is, the road question is complete now?
No.
No.
That was a discussion item on the executive board agenda, it did not make it to the regular board, so I will put it before you make a vote.
Okay.
I was able to get definitely three votes, I have two that probably are actionable, uh, but we can discuss that.
So, should we wait on this till April and do it all at one time, because this is there, no, this is ready?
The sooner that we can get this one badly, the sooner we can get, uh, compensation from the township.
Okay.
It's been voted by their board multiple times.
Okay, that's what we're looking for. All right.
Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Oh, this isn't a roll.
Oh, it's not a roll, it's a, it's just a vote. Do we have a motion? We do have a motion, yeah.
Yep, yep.
It was moved and seconded. All those in support of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion approved, 7-0. And I just need to, I, I, Matt has worked very closely with three different supervisors as we rotated supervisors in the township, and, uh, he's done a wonderful job with it, and it's going to happen. Thank you.
Enjoy, enjoy your vacation. Safe travels.
Now, on page 35 and 30, nope, nope, we don't, um, could you speak to the next item approved?
Sure. So, item 12 is on the agenda tonight because of the, um, discussion that the board had in closed session recently, um, and this has to do with the beta litigation response approval, we should just have a formal motion from the board to accept the, um, the response that was presented by legal counsel regarding beta.
Commissioner Lautner?
Um, I would defer to Commissioner Kramer, but I don't think she wants to make this motion, or do you prefer to make the motion being our beta?
No, no.
Okay. I would move that Leland County Board of Commissioners approve the response as drafted in the beta, the Bay Area Transportation Authority versus Grand Travis County and Leland County, necessary party defendant, Circuit Court Case 24-36928-CZ lawsuit.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in support of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion approved, 5-2. We now are down to item 13, Kathy, do you want to speak to that?
Um, just asking the board to amend the resolution that you passed to help facilitate moving some, um, not program income, CDBG monies for the land bank, the fund number that was chosen, um, under the Michigan Department of Charity, or the charity accounts for locally in the government, it, it's really unnumbered, it's more specific for judicial, and so we are asking you to amend your motion to, uh, your resolution, excuse me.
Commissioner O'Rourke?
Um, I move that the, I lost my place, I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners amend Leland County Resolution Number 224002 to reflect CDBG Fund Number 275.
Support.
And we discussed that this morning in Land Bank and Brownfield, and thank you.
Can we get a second for that?
Yeah.
Any discussion?
I think we need a roll call for that.
We do need a roll call.
Commissioner Aguirre?
Yes.
Commissioner Kramer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lautner?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Rourke?
Yes.
Commissioner Rexroth?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Chairman Wessel?
Yes.
7-0.
And a thank you to Kathy and to Gail of Petrucci and John, who have all helped make this happen.
And I'd like to suggest, just add that we have a potentially really great use for those funds.
Good, great. We now, Gail is here, and we're down to item 14. We have on page 43 of our packet, the, uh, the grant, tire cleanup grant?
Um, I have the 2024 Negro's Scrap Tire Cleanup Grant, and it's an amount of $6,000. We've been lucky enough to get this grant every year since 2019 when we started testing tires, so we will use this money to fund our tire collections this year, along with that $2 that we're going to charge for the tire.
Mr. Rush?
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners accept the Scrap Tire Cleanup Grant Agreement between the Leland County and the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy.
Support.
All those in support of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion approved, 7-0. We now have Parks and Recreation Weed Control.
And this is, uh, request, grantation agreement with Savin Lake. It should actually be a contract, and it's in front of you.
Yeah.
Can I?
Yeah, quick.
Oh, um, I just have a question. Um, I know this sounds kind of ridiculous, I, uh, do you know what they use for the weed control?
I don't have the names of the chemicals, pardon me, I know that it was two or three years ago, they, it was in 2020, they, uh, sprayed the ponds for, um, raised the milk well, we had invasive weeds there, and it was a pretty widespread spraying, we had requested a spot treatment, and, um, it was a little more than what we thought it might be, so, if, the next two years had ponds with very horrible weed growth, and all the nutrients still there, and we had algae blooms, um, and, so this year, um, they're just going to be concentrating on the algae blooms, and with whatever chemical it is that they use for that, in a spot treatment format, limited to areas that we need open for kids' fish day, rather than towards something that the kids can't fit in.
I think when that question came up a couple of years ago, we were told it was a copper, um, salt.
Is it a neonicotid?
No.
No? Okay.
It's an approved aquatic.
Neo-mix of, it's, it's terrestrial plant.
I don't know, this is not my, I just actually spoke with a woman who's, um, ahead of the, the Monarch, uh, butterfly nonprofit, and it's completely different, okay.
Commissioner Rexroth?
I'll get out of your way.
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners, I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners approve entering into the contract with Savin Lake Services in the amount of $2,425. It doesn't say, I guess that comes, I don't need to say where from for that.
I think it's Parks and Rec.
With funds from Parks and Recreation Budget.
That's, that's what I said, I think I remember saying that, I just, I said it very quietly at first, yeah, I'm kidding, thank you, yes, that's my motion.
We're repeating him.
Support. All those in support of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion approved, 7-0, thank you. We now have Late Edition Park and Recreation, uh, is that you, Steve? Is that you, Gail?
I got, I got Steve, but I didn't, go ahead, Gail, I don't know.
Page 60.
The request was from Commissioner Lautner, um, Parks and Recreation, got the motion under March 15, um, so approved at the middle of our rec grant, which would pay for engineered wood fibers to be spread out already, so you're on the front end of the line, which might apply.
So, it's a half, half of the cost of around $9,000, $9,400, so 50% would be covered by the grant through the MMRMA.
And if I can add to this real quickly, too, when we did our risk management review with MMRMA, and they actually came out and looked at all the Parks and Rec facilities, this was one of the things that they stated that, from a risk perspective, we should be doing, so I feel good that it would be supported.
And it was actually highlighted in 2017, the last time they came out, so it's time to do something, and I hope this grant could help.
Mr. Kramer?
Sure.
Uh, are we just talking wood chips here?
They're kind of engineered chips, they're, you know, very uniform.
Engineered wood fibers.
They cling together.
Okay.
So, they don't, just plain old wood chips go away in a hurry, I mean, big kids hear them, psh, they're gone, this, they all cling together and stay there longer.
Okay, but it's a wood-based product?
Engineered, engineered wood fibers, okay.
Totally renewable, we love it.
Commissioner Lautner?
Um, so, I, I was just wondering if, um, as far as the grant, who's going to actually write the grant to them? Are you going to write the grant?
I am, along with Charlie, and Don, and Scott, that's the team, yeah.
And you're just going to do Miles Kimberley, and if you're...
The other, the other parks are set for, for wood chips.
Oh.
So, for some reason, Miles was never done, so it's just, it's time.
Well, and there's, it, so you really don't have the scope of the amount, you're going to be measuring?
Yeah, we do, it's 205 cubic yards at $36 per cubic yard, for a total cost of 700, 7,380, delivery is $1,050, and $1,000 to spread it, for a total cost of 9,430, 50% will be covered by the grant, which is $4,715.
Okay, I don't have that, so, um...
As far as I know, this, this is not a project, it, it has not been approved by the Parks and Rec Commission?
Yes.
Unless it was approved last year prior to meeting?
What wasn't approved?
So, did this go to Parks and Rec in March? Is that the question? Did this go, was this...
The project itself wasn't approved.
To put the chips on.
The grant was approved in March?
Yes, it was, yes, it's in our minutes.
But I don't have the approval of the actual project itself.
It says in our EDF, the, uh, motion by Ross, seconded by Casey Noonan.
But that's to apply for the grant, or for the project, so the project, I see.
What's the project? I don't get what, to, to get us into compliance with our insurance company? I mean...
Probably has to be...
It has to be approved.
Well, I tell you what, you're, all you're doing right now is approving the application, so, at the next Parks and Rec Committee meeting, it could be approved pending funding approval, so it shouldn't hold up the project, it should still allow it to move forward.
I have another question, when we, the amount you're asking for, the 50%, I'm not sure we can ask for reimbursement of a maintenance debt salary?
That's, it's, it's, I asked the insurance company, yeah.
Commissioner Kramer?
Oh, um, it sounds like the, everything is moving in this direction, I just want everyone to know on Parks and Rec that there is this wonderful app called Chip Drop, and all of you in the audience, that you can actually get an entire truckload of chips delivered wherever, and I know that's not what you're looking for, but it's free and for hours, I'm sure you know about it already.
Yeah, but these are...
Any other, uh, comments, questions?
Yeah, I'm more satisfied, if we just apply for the grant, we can, we can at Parks and Rec, then it, I won't be there in April, but, um, do the project, it surprises me that we, because we were just told we needed, we weren't deep enough at old settlers, it's MMR.
So, that's considered maintenance? If it's already done, then that's maintenance, but since there's never been any chips laid at Miles Kimberley, this is considered a new project, and this can be eligible for a grant.
That's why it may come under MMRMA, it's a new project, so we have to get the new project plan in place.
Correct, yeah.
Correct.
Okay. But can we ask, oh, and we can't ask for them then if it's maintenance? Okay.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. All those in support of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved seven zero. Thank you. We now are down to Maintenance Building and Grounds.
Okay. So in regards to maintenance, the first item is on page 61, 62. This is addressing the Building and Grounds recommendation for Apex Engineering to do a scope of work for the facade repair. And they would manage the bidding of the project and the coordination of that. So we had received a quote previously and all the information is, as I said, is on 61.
Where is that?
There was.
Page 61, looking for a motion. Doug?
I move that the Lelandau County Board of Commissioners award the engineering and implementation of the lower level entrance facade repair contract to Apex Engineering and Management based on the quote dated November 21, 2024, as recommended by the Building and Grounds Committee not to exceed $15,000.
Support if you'll change the date to 2023 as written.
Nope, that's right. I just wrote it down.
23.
Yep, right, correct. Amend that motion to 2023.
Support. Any discussion? All those in support of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved seven zero. We now have a Parks and Recreation staffing request that's on page 63.
Correct. I'm going to ask Heather to come up just from the standpoint, because this was a conversation, I believe, that happened at Parks and Rec in regards to our, no, wait, I'm getting confused now. So hang on a second. This is not the one. We're addressing that other issue. Currently, we have a, an employee who works in the maintenance department who provides seasonal support as part of his full-time duties for the Parks and Rec. That individual, Scott, is going to be retiring the beginning of May. And so what we're recommending here is to actually have an overlap of staff to be able to post that position and have some training provided before his departure. So that is the request that we've got in front of you here, to overlap wages and benefits.
Page 63 of our board. Commissioner Kramer?
I move that the Lelandau County Board of Commissioners approve overlap of staffing and maintenance for a period not to exceed two weeks at the amount of approximately $4,000.
Support.
Any discussion or questions for Heather? For Kathy?
I'm just.
All those in support of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. Thank you. We now are down to item number 16. And that's for Commissioner Russ.
Yeah, I just would like to bring to the board's attention, policy number 1.02 is the subject, is assessing corporate council policy. And I just feel like we need to review this. This was brought to my attention by now four county employees, one elected official, a department head, and two residents. So it is something that we're not the only ones noticing discrepancies between our policies and what actually is occurring. So I think the difference in interpretation is where we're getting into a concern. We did have a conversation about the situation and two different conversations, and we didn't come to any consensus. So I just bring it to the board to make sure that you are aware that because it does read a little bit ambiguously, it's open to a little bit interpretation. And I think it opens us up for a little bit of liability concerns and just the idea that processes are not being followed consistently. And oftentimes, that leaves our administrator, current one and future ones, out of the loop when it comes to accessing our county attorneys. These are our attorneys, not individual board member attorney. So I would ask that we have our HR director probably work on some of these policies to see if we can clean them up a bit so that future misinterpretations aren't happening and the public isn't calling me particularly, saying, what's going on? I don't know if I need to be more specific or if we could make a motion to have. There are also five, I believe, other policies that have been brought to my attention and I've handed it over to our HR director that are either missing, lacking, or just not physically available to staff to follow. So I know Heather has a lot on her plate and everybody is understanding of that, but I think it should be a priority on her many things to do list. And I guess if that needs a motion or something.
Well, this was on here as an informational item, I think, because we just want to remind everybody that this is our policy and we also have a practice, if not a policy, that when one commissioner gets a legal opinion, we share it with everybody. And I think through the administrator's office, just so everybody gets the same information, like the one I sent you last night that we had on the undershare and administrator. Melinda, I got that, but we shared it with everybody because I think everybody needs to have the same information from the attorney. Doug?
I think it is policy. I mean, number five pretty much clearly states that all responses from corporate counsel will be submitted and maintain, I guess it doesn't say distributed to commissioners, so it doesn't, yeah.
Well, and the first one says elected officials may contact corporate counsel and shall inform the county administrator or board chairperson. So, yeah, there's just the ors and ands there that I think could be.
I do agree with the distribution to all commissioners. I don't know if that needs to be amended in that policy.
It would be helpful to be more specific so that there's clarity going forward. So, because we are having this conversation, but the next administrator may not have that same opportunity. So more clarity is better.
Do you need a motion to amend that rule number five?
Mr. Auger?
I'm confused about number one. I didn't think we could all just call the lawyer whenever we wanted.
The, let me speak to my understanding. The attorney is the board's attorney, and that means that any one of us or any elected official may request information or an opinion from the attorney. Our policy says that we do that through the administrator. Or if you're uncomfortable doing it through the administrator, you do it through the board chair. And then any opinions that we get are kept in an official file. And I think in practice, anyway, we want to also make sure that all commissioners get those, so that everybody has same amount of information.
Well, this says we can just call them up and then let y'all know.
The elected officials here is referring to the clerk and the sheriff and the treasurer.
Then I think that should be spelled out because we're all elected officials.
It's not worded the way we are wanting to interpret.
Mr. Kramer?
Oh, no, I'm just curious to hear from Melinda because she, I feel like she has some insight for potentially.
Yeah. I was here when this was adopted and when it was revised. This is written very loosely because we can't tell our elected officials that they can't, they cannot call our corporate counsel. They have the right to it. Now, we can have this policy. As you can see, there's nothing in here that says, you know, they'd be punishable upon firing squad if they break this policy. So we know, we know our elected officials call our corporate counsel when it's, when they need to. So the idea behind this was to ensure that should an item come up, that we don't have six department heads all calling our corporate counsel. We would have one, presumably either our administrator or our board chairperson. And furthermore, if we've already got a written opinion on that item, we don't want to be calling them, having them rewrite an opinion unless case law has changed. So it's loose. The other thing is, we've never had five, I believe, at the time, maybe there was seven in the first time, but seven commissioners all say, yeah, we agreed to handcuff ourselves from our employee who is our corporate counsel because that's one of the things we choose as far as, there's very few employees we select. Our corporate counsel is one, our auditor is one, our administrator is one. So that is why that is that. I do agree in reading this because, you know, it says, there's really no, we've got the county administrator, we can inform them that we're going to call the, our attorney or we can inform the board chairman, but nothing says that it is shared beyond. Now, as far as distributing, we're not going to want, say, our sheriff to get an opinion on something but have to distribute that. So obviously, there has to be that level of confidentiality in certain things. And our attorney is going to be the one to know that. How this would have to be worded, I am not sure. Beyond that, I really don't know what else to add. And other than that, there is no limit. So if the board chairman contacts the, if the board chairman contacts the attorney, again, there's no, does he tell the administrator? Does he tell the vice chairman, he or she, or the rest of the commissioners? There's no levels. It's just wide open.
Commissioner Rexroth, then Commissioner Auger, and then Commissioner Russ.
I just wondered, was it your intent to have this hashed out as part of this evening's meeting or just bring it to the attention, get it on agenda item? That may be executive.
I want the HR director, I believe she's in charge of writing policies or sharing policy that we've developed. And this is written incorrectly. We are all interpreting it differently right here. It needs to be fixed. So yes, I'm asking, I don't know if it's a motion or what, but we need, we need to look at these policies and make sure that we all agree and follow them.
I guess my question is, was it your thought we were going to do all that work tonight?
No, no. This was like education, like chairman said, but I want action on it, though.
Would you make a motion?
I moved that the Lelandau Board of Commissioners request the HR director to review policy number 1.02 to reflect that all elected officials go, follow the process outlined in the county policy.
Weren't you also suggesting we needed to review it and tighten it up some?
Well, yeah, yeah.
As well as some other policies.
Yeah. And there's five other policies that need looked to. So, yeah, I mean, I'm not going to, I'm not going to tell you what it should say. I trust that our HR director knows how to make it sound like we have a process.
Would you be willing to say, to ask our administrator to come back in April with a revision to this that we can add on the agenda and talk through that has some clarity and some questions answered?
If we have to, but yeah, I guess.
I don't think we need a motion for that. We just need to request it.
It's fine. Especially number one, because as it, as it is stated, I can call Norfolk anytime I want.
Well, and I also want to say that I contacted Matt because if we don't communicate amongst ourselves, there's a, there's a risk of paying for services that we've already received. Commissioner Lotner?
Yeah, and, and I would, I would say that same, Matt contacted me. He contacted me after he was up here and wanted to, and I shared that with the board that he had called me, that he didn't want us to misunderstand what he was saying is that we are not allowed to poll each other or talk to multiple commissioners, et cetera. And I did share that with you, but that, he wanted to clarify that to our board of commissioners. So I think I, we, as Commissioner Rexroth has stated before, everybody goes to baby commissioner school. And at baby commissioner school, you learn that county board of commissioners is responsible for budget and policy development. That is what we do. It's our job. It's our duty. We do have, I have no problem, obviously, using staff to help us in that if you feel it's necessary. I just caution you, I will not, I will not be tying the hands of our elected officials and contacting our corporate counsel when they feel like they need to. I won't, I won't support it. I think it's, I think it works. It's been rewritten, it's been revised for a reason, so.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kramer?
I'd like to spend some more time with this because I feel like individuals, and I'm just trying to do, run doomsday scenarios in my head, right? Like, what are the possible outcomes of this? I don't know all of them. I've been sitting with this like for five minutes now, but I do feel like there should definitely be, should be a way if a certain commissioner is seeing something or experiencing something that's out of the realm of going to the administrator or even the board chair, that they should have access to that. I feel like that is important, really important. That's all.
So I think what we have agreed to is to move this forward and the board will approve the final policy, but ask the administrator and the HR director to come back with proposed revisions.
Give me one second. That motion, I don't have a recording of it.
It's not a motion. It was a.
Not a motion.
Do we want a motion to do that?
No, just a direction.
No, we don't need.
Yeah, okay. So let's go to the last item on the agenda, I think. Michelle, item number 17.
Yes, thank you. That is just a simple motion to correct the L 4029 that was approved in 2023, column four. And it came to our attention when I was dealing with the attorney that there was a typo in the equalization and Andrew does apologize. He prepared an E D S with the correct format and we don't know that the state even is interested in it. We will send them the revised, but it calmed the attorney down by having the form corrected so that he would feel better about writing the resolution for us.
Commissioner Auger?
I would move that the Lelandau County Board of Commissioners approve the revision of the county's winter L 4029 2023 tax rate request form and return said from the equalization director after signed by the chairman of the board and county clerk.
Support.
I don't believe this has to have a roll call, right?
No.
Any discussion? All those in support of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved seven zero. We now are down to, I think?
The grants, isn't it? Grants, the 2%. 2% grants.
Yes, the 2%. Deb?
I just want to remind you all that you had the contracts were in your packet from last week. I think there was probably just a little bit of concern, and Michelle can validate this, that the motion itself perhaps was, needs to be more specific. So I'm trying to see now if I can find that, because I don't think we put that, did you, is it on the resolution?
I put very last page, I think.
No, no, it's fine. It's fine. As long as you all know, that should be the language that we need to move forward. So it's very specific.
It's right off of Deb's E D S that she prepared. I just kind of moved it into the motion.
Commissioner Kramer?
I love grants. I move that the Lelandau County Board of Commissioners approve the following grant agreements to support the 2% tribal allocations previously approved and awarded to Lelandau County. Agreement between Lelandau County and Child and Family Services of Northwest Michigan for an agreement period of January 1, 2024 to December 31, 2024, for a grant award of $5,000. Agreement between Lelandau County and Lelandau Christian Neighbors for an agreement period of January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2024, for a grant award of $34,000. Agreement between Lelandau County and Peninsula Housing for an agreement period of January 1, 2024 to December 31, 2024, for a grant award of $12,900.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in support of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Thank you. Kathy sent us late updates, late, late updates.
Late, 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 late.
Yes, late, late, late. And we've been busy the last two weeks with our audit completed and, oh, the in-house version. We're still getting emails for requests of more documentation because they still prepared sampling of all the many transactions that you approved and we facilitated. So I would like to say thank you to Sarah Lotner, keeping back from me, and she was very helpful that last week, right before the auditors came. And I just really wanted to shout out to her because she had come in feet on the ground real quick and appreciated her work. And I also appreciate the work of Michelle Crapper and Jen Zwicki, who, um, because of the retainer that you approved, who have done support and encouraged me. I think we're going to come out with a reasonably happy audit. And I just wanted to do those shout outs to people that really were very instrumental.
Thank you. Any questions for Kathy?
Thank you for all that hard work.
Thank you for your work.
It's always a good learning experience. And it's, it's very helpful to go through these things and sit with the auditors and talk about things that are new, like drains.
Oh, yes. Our 2023, our numbers are dwindling. Are we, should this be it?
This is it.
This is it.
Because we, we have closed off 23.
Okay.
If we discover anything that needs to be in 2028 issue, we do, we're prepared by client notification to auditors, and they take care of it.
Okay.
You won't see 23 out of the issues anymore.
Cool. Deb?
Kathy, can you just mention, I know I brought to the board back in August of last year that there was an IRS concern, and I'm happy to say that we did receive communication just, I think, two weeks ago, stating that that issue has been resolved. So just clarification that that's been rectified.
Thank you.
Cool.
Any other questions for Kathy? Okay, see you in a couple of minutes, Kathy. Any committee reports or special reports?
I believe four of us attended a joint meeting at the Cherry Capella Airport, and I guess it was the first step in looking at going with the Michigan Airport zoning act. And right now that we, we're zoned inside the fence, but what they're looking at is to regulations within a 10-mile area of the airport, such as the height of structures, objections, or objects of natural growth and otherwise regulating the use of property in the airport. So it's a safety item, and it was just an introduction. I'm sure you're going to hear more from it real soon. And it was us and Grand Trevers, and I believe some of the city people were there also.
What is the height restriction?
Can I just ask a question out of curiosity? Considering our, our airport is located directly in town and a 10-mile radius, that seems very, are they looking at other possible locations for an airport? Because that's a lot of space.
When I first got on the airport, they said, sure, absolutely. By Kingsley, probably $4 billion. Bottom line, it's where it's at. We just want to make sure that there's no schools underneath the runway path. There is one central right now, but it's a safety item. And the bottom line, you just, maybe 20 years ago, you could have moved. But right now, no, it's all the board's opinion that it stays where it's at. We got bigger planes, we carry more people. And actually, we're less, less planes, and I'm not getting into the Blue Angels, thank you.
You. I have one farm they merely did by eminent domain for an airport during World War II. Dan must took one of our farms during World War II, yeah.
Commissioner Elgar?
I went to the Northern Michigan Association of Counties meeting in Roscommon yesterday. Boy, it's been a long day. And I mentioned a few months ago that we toured one of the 13 dams in the middle of the state that consumers has. They have put out RFPs, they are going to sell those dams because they produce 1% of the state's energy, and it will take them, cost them a billion dollars to renovate them, and they are all due for renovation. So if anybody wants a.
A dam.
Or if you want to buy a dam.
We should do that.
We already have one.
Any sales?
Any other, uh, any other committee reports, recommendations, or resolutions? Any special reports by staff, commissioners, or affiliated agencies? Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for, for sticking with us tonight. We are now at our second public comment. You may talk to us about anything you think we need to hear. You have five minutes allocated, and we'll start with Bill.
This again, please watch this movie. Are still looking at this. Let My People Go, it's the name of the movie. About 2020 election, the day six, and you can watch it for free on Lumble dot com. That's it, Let My People Go. And the last meeting, uh, last Tuesday, there's been three downgrades on the public comment in the last two years since I've been coming. And, uh, last Tuesday in the morning, there were like 20 to 30 people here for the first public comment. And when it got to the second public comment, there were like three of us. And one of them was unemployed. So there were two that weren't employees here. So there's a big difference in when you speak. And two of the commissioners were gone by then, too. So you've really gone back on the public comment at a time when our country really needs to hear from the citizens. This handout is, uh, just what it says, Kurt Olson, he's a lawyer on the right, you picture there. And Steve Bannon is on the left, and it's a transcript of this discussion. It's a Supreme Court case, it's, it's been.
I don't want to see it.
Supreme Court, hasn't been accepted yet, or I don't know the legal ease language for it. But it was presented on Thursday, March 15th. And there's a 210-page downloadable PDF file. I've got 120 of the pages in here for the school evidence on the election fraud. And we can't have that in our republic, or we're not going to stand that way with the socialist, communist nations. So I'm just, it's 10 minutes and 48 seconds. I'm going to swing through this a little bit. But on page two, he says there's three, three things that have changed in this document. The first one, they say they used, uh, they used altered software. That's one of the things. The second thing was, they performed, they say they performed a logic and accuracy test, but they performed it on five spheres. They didn't perform it on any of the actual machines. And I know here, we came to the logic and accuracy test here. But what about all the precincts? I, I figured exactly what happened. Were they all tested? Were they all observed? Shouldn't that be happened? This picture on the left on page two is the first page of the Supreme Court document. That was submitted on March 15th, as it said. The third instance of fraud, and you have to tell me that without setting my timer when we're done. The third piece was, uh, our cyber experts, our team has uncovered that we mastered cry, cryptographic encryption keys that are used to govern and encrypt all election data. If you remember the Enigma machine in World War II, I know, but if you, historically, when the grapevine was, they were able to decrypt that cipher code and then read the Germans' messages. It's essentially a God key. It allows a malicious actor to control the entire election and do anything they want and escape detection on page three. So Steve Bannon said, correct me if I'm wrong, this could have gotten Murdoch off an $847 million fine, would it not? And Kurt answers, the lawyer, this is, this is it. It certainly would have thrown a big monkey wrench into that. Because again, you can control an entire, any malicious actor can control an entire election. With this, you can control the entire election from start to finish. You can put in your own results. And we have seen this in every system they've been able to inspect across the country, whether it's Maricopa, Georgia, Michigan, Andrew County, Pennsylvania, Golden County, Georgia, all on Dominion machines. And they represent in their contract that they protect the election data with A E S. Stands for Advanced Encryption Standards. Yet the keys are left open and unprotected on the election database for anybody who knows where to look. You can gain access to the system, which is any insider, anybody can bypass the window login. You can go to YouTube and find out how to defeat this. Necessary tools to bypass the windows login. It certainly, a nation's speed actor would have no problem with China. And so this is, uh, one, is one of the most incredible security breaches. He goes on to say.
Thank you, that's your five minutes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Thanks, Bill. Yes, Ms. Dawkins. Thank you for bringing in the brownies tonight.
Oh, those are delicious.
It was yummy.
That was way better than a brownie.
Actually, I want a debate brownie, they couldn't like a brownie mix, and I didn't feel like making one from scratch because I, for so long time, because I've done that. Okay, Kathy Dawkins, Leland County. I want to thank the commissioners for talking about your policies of contacting your corporate counsel. I'm kind of surprised, no, I shouldn't. It concerns me as a taxpayer, I wouldn't use that term. We've got, the best I can figure is, we've got seven elected officials, and then we have seven commissioners and an administrator. So if you've got 15 people who can all contact a corporate attorney, what do you have in your policies that says, that prevents, let's say, five of you guys calling up the corporate attorney and asking the same question and getting the same answers? And I'm sure that that corporate attorney is not going to only bill once, they're going to bill for the five calls. I think it makes, no, not make, I know it makes more sense to run it through a main person and then funnel it out. And it's my understanding, or I would believe that it should be, your administrator. I mean, and your CFO, whatever you're going to call this new person. That's the person that you have decided to, um, hire to handle the administrative parts of this county government. And I don't think it's, um, I don't think it's unreasonable to have an elected official, and I understand there is this, you know, how are we going to make the elected official behave and do what they're supposed to do? But you've got that issue anyway. So that's not a reason not to funnel it through your administrator. That way, the administrator would be the person that would know that, yes, we've already dealt with this, or no, this is a new issue. And then, um, you can decide to the administrator, saying, yeah, go ahead, I don't want to be the middle person. You go ahead, call them, get back to me with what the discussion was, and then I can have a file or something on it. I just don't think it makes a heck of a lot of sense to have everybody willy-nilly having the ability to call up corporate counsel. It causes problems. I've worked in all sorts of different government entities. And I have never had, that I'm aware of, where every elected official can just call up the corporate counsel when they want to. We know that things have happened with our commissioners where some people feel very strongly about one part of an issue and another person feels very strongly about that same issue. And I just don't think the continuity, you're supposed to be speaking together as a board. I just think if somebody, it doesn't take that much longer to call up your administrator and say, hey, I see this problem. I'd like to talk to them, or, you know, it's not a problem. You talk to them and then get back with me. And that's my view.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other public comments? Yes, Mr. Pope.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Guess what I might talk about? I know, I know you applied for a grant to do these solar panels. We didn't hear the end of the, you got to consider withdrawing this thing. It's, I'm not against solar panels. But I'm against something if it doesn't make economic or practical sense. You should look at this as a business plan. This whole project could go to heck if you don't administer it right or finance it correctly right from the start. You don't have the time, you don't have the skills. There's a terrible cost benefit project missing as a 40-plus-year payback. And no one would use their life savings and invest in something like that. It's a horrible installation location, and that was thought about at the last minute. And this is going to add to your yearly expenses and manpower. This will push off all the expenses and demolition down the road, of course, which wasn't addressed in the grant. Solar panels, of course, in this area is marginal. You need to have utilities do this. But you, there are one thing, you've been elected, elected to be responsible. You shouldn't let emotions get into this thing. This is our money that you're using. This project is not free. It's coming out of the Inflation Act. It increases our debt, and who's going to administer it? And I mentioned now this, you need to go back and look at that package at page 28. The staffing mess that you're in, you're now going to add to it. There's three weeks of work for the administrator, just a bill. There's three weeks of work for the finance director, and that's going to revolve in order. There's one to two weeks for the treasurer. And I think I told you if I was a treasurer, I'd go tell you apply a kite. He doesn't have time to do this. Up to a month's work just for the facilities manager now to build this thing. You don't even have a facility engineer. That's all on page 28. I'm not making this up, that stuff is in there. The top of page seven mentions educating the public. That's not defined any place in the state laws that tells you what our county commissioners are supposed to do. We're not, this is not an education place to set these panels up and bring school kids in here. That's taxpayer's money that you're going to be using now for the life of this thing, and that's wrong. Middle of page eight says to put them in parking lot. That's a terrible idea, 13 feet in the air. You're going to have to buy a bucket truck, and you don't have one. That's not in the grant. You're going to clean and plow around the post, salt corrosion, bird poop, and all that mess up in there. That's not a good place for it. Throughout the report, it mentions a lower cost of solar energy. I'll get to that. It says it'll save 35,000 bucks a year. This project costs 1.1 million. If you do the math, it's a 31-year payback. That's wrong. The biggest thing left out of this report, though, is the yearly expenses. None of us is going to be here in this room to maintain these at the end of 20 years. And this is an application, but it's not a business plan. And I mentioned that you need to have someone look at this. It only took me eight hours to look at it because this is a business plan for the county. You're getting something free, but now how are you going to take care of it? And does it fit your business plan? Someone could look at this real close and dot the Ps and Is and whatever, and, and get at it. Keep in mind that you need this as a plan, and I think you should hire somebody to do it. The National Renewable Energy Lab says that it costs about 31 bucks a year per kilowatt to maintain a solar panel. Well, some say 1,000 bucks per, per 20 panels or something. Any way you look at it, it's going to cost you 11,000 bucks a year. It's just a map, the stuff that goes to heck on. Well, that takes away from that, whatever it was, 35,000, brings it down to 24,000. Now, it's going to take over a quarter of a million bucks over 20 years to do it. You should give that money to the sheriff department. They could use that money instead of building solar panels. They're the ones that need the money. So if you're going to take that and subtract it for, now it's $24,000 a year that you're going to save. 26-year payback. I mean, I'm not making this up, it's in that report. And you got to look at that kind of stuff. There's changes to grants, and that is really a stickler. If this thing was all smooth, that's something else. But if they go down and find rocks down there, they'll be back to the administrator and say, you know, we need to change this, and you got to fill out this form and that form and this form. Just because it's paid for isn't a good reason. You could build a railroad track to travel city, and it's free. But now you got to maintain it. So you really got to look hard at it, not from the solar energy thing. And I, and I don't mind solar energy, it has its place. You got to look at.
Thank you.
I'll be happy to sit down with anybody and talk about this, but this.
Thank you.
My time up?
Yep.
Yes.
Thanks, John.
But thank you.
Do you want me to sit and talk?
Any other public comment? Yes, Mr. Makowski.
Good evening, Steve Makowski, Mr. Knowles. I agree with Mr. Pope's presentation. But not unusual, our county commissioners always do things in a panic. So we'll just, this comes back, it's real, we just do it. Got a new people up here. They want to waste their time with anybody. They don't understand our business planning. And they don't understand anymore. But a tragedy is coming in this one, too. We, we want to talk about, again, and repeat, we talked about leadership all over the place here, up here this afternoon. We do not need leadership. As much as many people don't understand that they, that people don't want to be led anywhere by elected officials. They want the county commissioner to have one objective. Provide the best possible, least cost Republican form government. For MCL 46.111, this is the law, standing for pictures only. Simply, by simply, an economy performing and providing the mysterious and necessary functions and duties of local governments. No word in that law is of saying that county commissioners, over the last over years, no one is mandated in that law. They are required to self-initiate, which hasn't been done over and over again by these, by these commissioners or officials either. And to me, this has a, if you're older, it's being done under color of law. Every commissioner that gets elected wants to do something or has a passion. Every one of these delegates is done with a passion that people don't understand about themselves in order to just keep on doing it. Again, today, I think we almost had another panic session, session this afternoon. We had four or five people apply for position. And at the beginning of the meeting, it was discussed that the commissioner would be, you're doing, people that are hired here in this position and then consider that and make his final decision sometime later, most likely in a couple of days to our special meeting. We understand that the selection has already been made. Am I correct? So beautiful panicking of our county. Your county has been there all time. So you can keep on doing it.
Thanks. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Any commissioner comment? Yes?
Oh, I just, I'm still not completely, I don't, I'm not sure which direction we're going with the HR policy that was brought to us today. I just do want to recognize, I'm thinking about, like, direct examples of, not for Deb, but bad behavior on the part of the administrator. Because in, in, in the role that we have with them, us circumventing at certain points, if the administrator, if we need to, I'm thinking like male, female, inappropriate relationship. There's like, I'm, I'm trying to come up with the doomsday scenarios in my head. And that's why I don't want to see a policy like that in place. And that's what makes me nervous about something like that. When, when, when my rights are removed as an individual and I am forced to go through someone in order to tackle something, that's when I start getting nervous. And I have, I have lawyers for friends. Like, all, that's all you do as a lawyer, I feel like, is just like, think about all the worst-case scenarios that possibly go wrong and then you make a choice based off of that. So I just wanted to speak to that so, so you can understand kind of where vibration meant. But thank you.
Anybody else? Commissioner Lautner?
Well, thank you for that because that is an absolutely perfect example of, of what had been done in the past, some years in the past with, with an administrator. And, and things were nipped in the bud before the county got into some serious legal issues. So, yeah, thank you for that. I, we failed to thank all the candidates publicly for interviewing this afternoon. And I just wanted to do that. I think it, you know, it takes a lot to step up and, and say you want to help, you know, serve us here and serve us through this time. So I just wanted to say thank you to all the candidates that stepped up.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments? Okay, Kathy, you're back.
I got the bills. Yes, so I hope so. So I would recommend approval of amendment number 24-003.
Support. All those in support of that motion say aye.
Aye.
No questions, apparently, okay. And then I would make, I would move to approve claims and accounts,
Support. All those in support of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, 7-0.
That was all of them, although lately. And then I would move to approve post-audit,
Support. All those in support of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, 7-0. Motion to adjourn. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.